A B M. All right, y'all ready?
I heard it.
No, I mean, because they do had, they did have good hands in their bag.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for June 7th, 2021. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, once again, we come to you with Thanksgiving, thanking you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to serve. We ask your continued guidance and blessing upon our school system. And we ask you continue to bless our students while they are on their summer break and our staff. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, citizens address the board. Anyone sign in? All right, number four, approval of the work session agenda. Have our agenda items before us. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McAlver. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. Others in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, items of information, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pullis.
All right, goal area one for student success. First area up there is that we're looking to purchase literature, excuse me, a literary program for the elementary school called My View. The cost that you'll see there is not to exceed $90,000. That's the base salary amount. There'll be some additional costs, but that is extremely under what we budgeted for this. So, but they, they went through the vetting process of the material with the teachers and, and the central office staff. They like this program and think that that will greatly enhance our literacy initiatives at the elementary school. But I'm telling you this now that come Monday, that might change a little bit, once we get all the other things that go along with it. But, you know, that'll be paid for out of CARES Act two money as we move forward. And there is a, there's an attachment in your folder if you'd like to read up on a little bit about what it provides.
Is this just for the elementary school or?
Just for elementary, it's K five, K five elementary. And as you know, that, you know, we've been using Bookworms for a very, very, very long time. And, and it's really just a basic program. And so Sandra, is anything you'd like to say about the My View program at all?
Um, the teacher's life is very comprehensive. Um, we do try to compare it to other programs that we're looking for. It gives them a very strong arrival for it as well. D M A levels are, are, it's way worse. So, um, we do have a very.
We want to step it up a notch. So this is, uh, this is something that we're going to look to do. So there's going to be additional things added to it in the near future. All right, anybody else have any questions about My View? If not, summer school, um, could I ask Ms. Sheets, could you just give a real brief overview of where we are with summer school?
Do you want me to?
Stand up or just? The camera's on you, so.
So summer school started today for elementary and middle school, which is very exciting. So at, you know, and it goes from Monday through Thursdays and it runs from eight until twelve. And we have buses that take the students, you know, to and from, feed the students. We try to do some social emotional stuff too, but the focus really is on math and reading. Uh, and we're doing both remediation as well as acceleration. Because if you read or know anything about education, students who are behind respond more so to acceleration than they do in remediation. So we have remediation to get some of those skills that they're lacking, but the best thing we can do to move forward is to accelerate. So we are excited about that. At enrolled in the middle school, there are forty-one students and seventy-one have Todd Grant. The high school's different. So the high school started June first and will run through June thirtieth. And that's more about providing, well, it's two things, it's two goals. It's credit recovery, but then it's also an extension for those students who weren't looking like they were going to finish necessarily. So it gives them an extra month. But there are some students, according to Mr. Willis, that, um, will be finished next week. So that's great because they didn't start them over. They started them where they were in their courses. And so that will be over with on June thirty if y'all have any questions. That's also Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sheets. All right, goal area two, organizational effectiveness. This is, that's a whopper of a number there, but if you look at it, we have budgeted extremely well this year. And as it stands right now, we have a not to exceed one million dollars to go to local projects. Obviously, you know that the kitchen project's coming up. But to add to that, the fact of it is that the, the final number that Tammy should be able to close in as we move forward with the end of the, end of the year money. But we've done extremely well with managing the money that, that we've used this year. So I appreciate all the effort that Tammy's put into, to dot her i's, cross her t's. But the other aspect of it is that the schools have tightened their belts to make sure we do this right. So we're asking the board to transfer that money to the local projects account next week. Okay? The other part of this, and we've talked about this in the past, that we have to continue to transfer money to the energy lease debt service account so that we can pay that off, um, continue to pay it off. So that money's a necessity based on the East Loss money shortfalls that, that are going to continue for a while. The R F P, we put an R F P out, um, the proposals for our insurance coverage were due, I think, on the fourteenth of May. We looked at the data, we had two proposals. So if you'll pull open those two areas, if, Rusty, if you can pull those up for me. So we're seeing it. The first one is G S B A and, and I condense this, the whole thing's eighteen pages. But I think the, maybe closer to the last page, just slide down a little bit till you get to the dollar amount. That one right there, yep. All right, so overall cost for annual insurance coverage for our buses and buildings and everything that goes with it is around $218,413. That is slightly up from last year. And so that's one of the reasons it prompted us to do the R F P, to see if there's somebody else out there that could possibly do better. So let's pull the next one up. So we were able to get another proposal submitted by Selective, as you see there. And again, um, they went through the process, but you see the grand total, the premiums that they were asking for, for the, for the coverage is $294,552. So, um, I venture to say that we need to stick with G S B A and continue to work with them. And, you know, we, we've had some conversations about staying with them. And we might turn to the part of maybe bundling some of our buses. Some of them, maybe we don't stick with a thousand dollar deductible, for example, that maybe we, we change the deductible to a little higher on some of our older ones. And, and so we've got some proposals, that might end up saving us eight to $10,000. And we'll know that probably later on and throughout this month. But again, I think that when you look at the two, and those are the only two that put it in, we put it out there for the world to see. We got the two and G S B A is still the, the one that we need to stick with. Any questions on any of that? All right, next, uh, next area up here is the public hearing portion of it. And again, it's, it's our first hearing. Just to kind of go back through this real quick, if you'll pull up the two documents, you know, as mentioned.
Would you please open that door?
Yeah, I don't know who to shut up, but it's got to be open, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think because they were cleaning up out there.
Yeah, yeah, so. But if you look at the budget again, you know, we're still $100,000 less in fiscal year twenty-two as we were in fiscal year twenty, even when COVID hit, we took that huge cut for, um, for Q B E. And, you know, we've had some changes that, that have made, we tightened everything down. Our budget still, is still going to be under what it was prior to COVID. And then if you'll take the next slide, and again, the ten and a budget, we've added some additional information on here as the, the law has actually changed. And they're supposed to give us a template starting the first of July about what we're supposed to report. And so Tammy, tell me if I'm off here, but bottom line of it is, you know, we're, we're, uh, special programs. That's our food service amount, that's nearly a million dollars. And then we've added our CARES Act, what we are able to possibly, possibly draw down this year, what our intent is. And then, you know, our debt service, um, if we can use some of that money to help pay off that portion, we intend to. And then, you know, with our, our project funds, we're looking again at taking care of our, our lease as well as we have some bonds out there that, you know, eventually, and then we have our kitchen project that we're going to need to continue to, to take care of. So our overall consolidated fund, and this is kind of different than what we've had in the past, as I mentioned, is the $23,628,881. I do expect that, you know, the, the money from CARES Act will actually have more than that, but we can't receive it until the following fiscal year, okay? So, and, and as de, as designated, we have to provide 20% of that for the purposes of, of closing and, and doing the, their academic recovery. So that's our, that's our budget area. I don't see anybody here from the public, but we've got, uh, that's what it's here for, to open up if anybody from the public wanted to come. It's been advertised appropriately. And that's where we're at. All right, next area up here is the discussion of previous meeting minutes. And if you will take a look at those and if, let me or Elsie know if there are any issues with the meeting minutes from last May. And the budget retreat was in there as well. So you have, I think, three or four documents to look at. Just get with us and if there's changes that we need to make, we'll make them. And if I could turn this over to Ms. Tammy to talk about our financials for May 2021.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Return to page one. The general operating account, we began the month with 3.99 million. We had receipts of 1.99 million and dispersments of 1.5 million, leaving us with a balance of 4.4 million in the general operating account. Sixty-nine revenues, general fund revenues. The school year is 91.6% complete. And we have recorded revenues of 13.2 million, which is at 92.9% of our budgeted 14.2 million in revenues. The taxes collected, we, our, our property taxes, we have collected 91.9% of the net levy. And we have collected 101% of our budgeted revenues for property taxes for this year. Last year we closed out, we had collected, we ended up collecting 94%. You know, at the end of August when we closed out, 94% of the levy. But we came in short of the budget, we only collected 98.4% of the budget. So we're actually doing a little better than previously this year.
Absolutely.
For tax revenues. Okay, expenditures on page seventy-one. General operating, it's period to date expenditures through May 31st is 11.1 million, which is 75.2% of our budgeted 14.8 million. There are no questions on that. Page seventy-six, fund balance, we are at 4.1 million in the general operating, I mean, general, yeah, general operating fund balance. And page seventy-eight, the 26,110 sinking account, $4.65. The debt service account, we had May East Loss receipts of 127,931 dollars. And we currently have just over a million dollars in the debt service account. And those, uh, May receipts were up 42% from May of last year, which if you remember, we were in the middle of COVID.
That's a COVID.
Uh, the East Loss projects account, we began the month with 4.4, $4,999. We did have a dispersment of $4,516. We have $483 left in the East Loss account.
Was that the fence that we put in?
That was the fence.
Yeah, we put a fence, a security fence in at the high school, back in the backside, um, to make sure that people couldn't slide into the back doors.
Okay, local projects, we have, we started with 500,000. We did have a dispersment of 21,000. Uh, we paid a contract to John Tuckey for working it done so far on the middle school project. We have 479,000, $10 in the local projects account. And finally, the energy efficiency lease account, we have 200,612.
And is this the account that we'll put the 300,000 in?
To make that happen, that is a dollar payment in.
Right.
Are there any questions on that account?
If you have any questions that come up, um, you know, between now and Monday, we'll have another opportunity. All right, so if I could ask Mr. Massa to come up and talk about some of the facility issues?
All right, great evening, board. It was a pleasure to, um, say a few words about our retirees. It was, um, where they'll be missed. With that being said, painting is the first update I have, just to let you know that we have a painting scheduled, um, July 27th through the 11th for McIntosh County Academy. And we will be painting from the very top all the way to the bottom. Um, the kitchen inclu, uh, the cafeteria included, we're going to get a full, fresh paint job in our school. So it's, um, needed and it's about time and we're going to have a great facelift there, so.
Dates again?
Between, I'm sorry, June 27th and July 11th, the dates are for painting. They hope to finish that early, but that's the window. We'll have the dead week of July fourth week and then the week prior to that, uh, right before that, I apologize, that they'll have to paint it. So we're really excited about that. Our communications plan, we've worked very hard with Hastings Communication and have a solid plan for radios in the system. Each school, like I've said in the past, will be having a set of radios, the district will be having a set of radios, and then also radios on our buses. We have a delivery date of the second week of July, everything's in order for that. Today I got off of a conference call with them and, um, we're ready and we're, they're programming the radios as we speak. So that, that's really exciting that we'll have, um, a solid communications plan.
Mr. Massa, that'll be before first day of school?
Yes, um, the second week of July, we'll actually have it, followed by some training this summer so that we go into school fully trained and fully equipped. Summer deep cleaning, this summer is going to be a really tight summer, but, um, the, with the painting of the high school and summer school is something that we haven't had this long in the building students. So that changes of all of our summer cleaning procedures. The floors are a big deal. Every single piece of the furniture has to come out of every single classroom. And coordinating that with the principals and K B S has been, um, a real challenge, but an enjoyable process because we got through it. We sat down with all the administrators with K B S and we've come up with a solid plan that, um, you know, everything going the way it should, we're going to have a very beautiful school system at the very start of school with everything done. It's planned, it's ready to go, and we're, we're just in the process of making it happen. Again, good planning is the key to that, and I think we've done our due diligence with that. What I'm really excited about is completing our renovation, not completing, but continuing with our renovation of our softball field. Our softball field has always had, um, I would say some issues with it, with holding water. But we've got a solid plan, a Butch from Leisure Services has taken on the project of, um, cutting out a, a lip that's around the edge of the softball field that collects the water, adding more turf to it to make it official to the G H S A rules and regulations, and then laser grading that, um, clay so that it's, um, perfect. Dr. Pullis said that our girls deserve as much as anybody else. Our sports program is, is equitable and we're going to put the money in and make it nice. Not only that, we're also going to do some renovations to the area on top of that, that, that's going to surprise them. So we're really excited about where we're going with our softball field. And our softball program is, um, going to be in good shape when we return to school. Everything's in order, Butch has already gotten all the dimensions, everything. And we're just collecting purchase orders now or we're, um, putting things in for the job to be done. We're hoping in the next two, bef, next, um, month to actually have it done by the end of, middle of July is what we're hoping for, a, a completion of that. And we'll still be able to play on it while we're doing it. There'll be some, just a few short days there that, um, they won't be able to actually use it this summer, but it won't interrupt the flow of practice this summer. Any questions about those?
I just have one question about the deep cleaning that you mentioned that, you know, because of summer school and stuff that was going to hinder. They're still going to have time like to strip and wax the floors, clean carpets in the offices and things like that though, right?
As part of the plan, what we've done is we've blocked off certain sections of the school. All the principals were on board and even having to move some of the summer school teachers during summer when a classroom's done, well, we'll do some moves. But, um, it's, like I said, a chest work of moves, but we've got a solid plan that every floor will be done. Mr. Boone, uh, I'll have to say that stepped up with technology, they, coordinating with technology and making sure all the computers and everything, um, was a challenge, but we have a really good plan. But absolutely, all floors done in every classroom. Now carpets, I'll, I'll say straight up, it might be the very beginning of the school year. So I, I don't want to prom, overpromise that, but they, they're going to try their 100% best for the carpets on top of that.
He had a very good meeting with all the leaders to pull them all together and say, here, here's the period we've got, let's work through it. And so they developed that plan as an actual team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massa, appreciate it very much. Under goal area three, culture and climate, um, the first one up there, just as a first review, first, um, initial look at it is our request to adopt a new field trip and excursion policy. And this is far more detailed than the, the last one. And so it basically just sit and cut and pace would be very difficult. So if you'll read it in its entirety, it provides, um, some, some basic information that if there's a field trip or excursion that's out of state overnight or more than 300 miles, that it requires the, the approval of the Board of Ed. And I think that's a, that's a good, um, requirement that's placed there as well. It, it talks about, you know, the number of chaperones that should be there as well as, um, you know, responsibilities that fall in line with chaperones and riding on the buses. It could be as simple as making sure boys and girls are separated. But there's, this details an awful lot of information dealing with that, as well as who pays for the field trip. So as we go forward, um, that has to be sent to Mr. Massa. Mr. Massa will go through it and validate the information and make sure that if there's a, if there's a payment due, that it's, that it's understood ahead of time. So I would just ask the board to take a look at that and set it on the, on the table for 30 days and go from there. Any questions now about any of that? All right, the, the next area, um, that's on there is goal area, you can go ahead and get out of that. Okay? I'm sorry. The pavilion.
I didn't talk about the pavilion if you'd like me to.
Yeah, say it real quick, I'm sorry. I should have caught it.
This is, um, something that I didn't want to go un, unmentioned, that we are in the process of working on actual construction or not in the process. All the material has been delivered for the pavilion that's going to go behind the middle school on that basketball court, right behind the Girls and Boys Club. Thank you to the Girls and Boys Club for their donation and their, um, contribution to the system of, uh, a very, very nice pavilion covered, um, area for, for the students. All the material has been delivered and construction will actually begin on the fourteenth. It's going to be, um, a great addition, a great shaded area for kids and will use for years and really, really good.
Thank you.
All right, under, um, goal area four, quality workforce, um, Ms. Bergman, do you want to talk about number one?
I can. Okay, so we have the renewal of Dr. Pullis's contract. If you will, um, I think Richie drafted this and there was just one change. And he'll read over it next week, we can, um, vote to approve it. If you have any questions, call me or talk to Richie.
Thank you. All right, next item up there is the continuation of providing, um, the sheriff's office providing the S R Os for us, the M O U or agreement. The, the dollar amount in there has gone up a little bit, but we've also got a commitment now for three years, um, so that we can go forward and know what it's going to be for the next three years. So we've worked that out with Sheriff Jessup and, uh, he's, he has, um, provided us with, I think, three great S R Os, one for each of those schools. We've got great relationships, they're good, good people that keep our kids safe. So, uh, I, I do think that this is something we need to recommend and, and for the board to approve. All right, next item up there is, um, teacher evaluation appeal policy. And again, thi, this has been on the table already, so next week I'd ask for approval of this. Basically, just to kind of talk about it real quick is, this is the one where if they're a veteran teacher, then if they have an issue with their, their summative evaluation that they're able to bring forward to come, uh, an issue with the right entity to be addressed. And that's not been in the past. So this is new, it was written into the law, um, to be effective on one July. So again, you know, this has been on the table since our last, I think, work session. And so we usually set it for 30 days and then we can jump on it for next week. All right, the next area to pull up, this is a first introduction of the draft for professional personnel, personnel, personal leave and absences. We actually just renewed this, um, about, you know, this time a year ago. But the state legislative made a huge change and so we had to add it in there. And the change specifically is that we provide by law, um, up to three weeks of paid leave for maternal reasons, so parent reasons. So if you are adopting, uh, having a baby, um, or if you're a foster parent, then, um, documentation would need to be provided to validate the information, but that you could, you could receive up to three weeks. And it's done on a rolling calendar so that, you know, you can't earn any more than that throughout the course of the year. This policy, it covers that particular new addition as well. If you'll look at the area that talks about, um, I think it's under professional, personal, personal leave and absence is very top of it. It says, "No employee regardless of specific category will be absent from work for more than five consecutive days without the specific prior approval of superintendent." And I'm putting that in place primarily because after five days, there can be some real tricky situations and we need to make sure that somebody just doesn't continue, continue to be out. There has to be a category so we can make sure that they're covered. So, um, outside of that, there's, there's, might be some cosmetic changes, but other than that, it's, it's the same as we've had in the past. All right, next, any issues on that particular policy? If you don't have them right now, ask me later and we'll get ready to, to move forward on that. All right, next area up here is the addendum to the M O U with the Golden Isles College and Career Academy. Again, we started that in January, that original agreement ran through the end of this month. So this is an extension of that. It's, uh, been very, very advantageous for our students at the high school to attend those classes out there. I do think just about everybody got to take advantage of a trip out to G I C A to see what they offer. It's a great, great opportunity for our kids. And this just extends it under the same terms for, for one more year, one more school year, okay? So if you'll take a look at that and, um, by written notice, we'll, we'll extend that out. Might be the conclusion of everything I have, Madam Chair. Oh, I have one more thing. The Boys and Girls Club is asking if we would dedicate a bus to them. They will provide the driver and everything else that goes with it, but it's just providing a bus and we have the ability to do that. They take the kids on numerous trips throughout the summer and just want to make sure they have a, a good, reliable bus to do so. That requires the board approval if we're going to do that. And I would, I would ask that, uh, that we approve that if all possible. Okay? Any questions on anything I've covered? I know that's a lot of information, um, as you can see.
Well, I know it seems like a lot of policies, but when they come from the top, you kind of have to.
You kind of have to do it.
Make those changes.
All right, the only other thing I have, uh, Madam Chair, to, to talk about, um, in executive session personnel.
All right, so can I have a motion to go into executive session with no legal, just personnel?
I think, Richie, you see any need for legal?
No.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewitt, second. Second, Mr. Straggles. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. And we will return. Okay, the board adjourned to executive session. Okay, the board adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel issues. Can I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion, no.
Mr. Hewitt, second, Mr. MacIver, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, board comments.
Finished up another awesome year. Excited about, uh, where we are today at the end of twenty-twenty-one, and, uh, really excited about next year. Progress we're making this summer and preparing for a great year next year, so looking forward to it.
Um, I just want to thank everyone who had a hand in graduation.
It was great.
Yeah, that was a grand slam, I had my doubts going into it, uh, because of the heat. Uh, but, uh, it was real nice, I think the community loved it, um, the kids loved it, um.
Turnout was great.
And I guess we will be back there again next year.
We got the plans, we're gonna, we'll make a few adjustments, but it was a great.
Yeah, it was, it was a great night, and, uh, thanks to everyone who, uh, who, uh, who planned it, did a great job.
Um, happy summer to everybody, and happy summer school to those in summer school. And, um, I'm excited because when we come back in the fall, we're done with masks, we're done with all of COVID.
Every time.
We're back to normal, one hundred percent normal. I'm excited about that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mr. MacIver.
All right, well, again, my sentiments exactly, uh, to what the other board members have said. And then I want to say to our, uh, students and staff, you know, summer vacations have started, and just I ask you to be careful and enjoy. Um, and then, uh, again, graduation was awesome. Um, I think it was real nice, and just to see our kids and their smiling faces just made, I tell you, it changed, it changed everything when you see them smiling, they always make you wanna cry, saying they were looking for tissue. It was just, it was beautiful. And, um, and to our retirees, we're excited to see you all go out with a bang, and we're gonna miss you, but enjoy your retire- retirement and have fun, see the world. Congratulations again.
Yes, and Dr. Pulis, do you off the top of your head have our final graduation percentage rate for the year?
I think it's seventy-eight out of seventy-nine, so what is that, ninety-eight, ninety-nine?
Yeah, and, um, I would just like to say a special thank you to the high school staff and, um, parents and our staff, and all of the support that our students have gotten to have attained such a nice graduation rate. It was an awesome graduation, this is an awesome school system, we're doing some awesome things, and I wish everybody an awesome summer, thank you.
Read, read, read.
Absolutely.
Do all the reading you can, kids, and parents, make sure.
There are summer reading requirements out there.
Summer reading programs.
Yeah, I'd just like to say something as the parent of two children in the district. Uh, sometimes our district gets knocked, but I'm gonna tell you, Todd Grant this year, they did an exceptional job with them. Uh, not only are we proud of their accomplishments, they're proud of their accomplishments. Uh, those two are very proud of the academic progress they made this year, and they know it. Uh, my son went from barely essentially reading in kindergarten to reading the word pharmacy on the side of a grocery store building. And you should see him light up when he's able to read words like that. And that's what it's all about, and I just wanna commend the district, and especially Todd Grant and, uh, Ms. Tucker and Ms. Gordon for the great job they did this year.
That's good. Awesome.
Awesome.
Now, again, just, uh, I just wanna send my appreciation out to the board for your support. This is a, a great board, the public needs to understand that, uh, they have the interests of our students at heart, and we've got a lot of great things going on. So, uh, we've got a great staff, and we're gonna move our kids forward.
Amen.
We're adjourned.
Awesome, thank you all.